One of our longtime friends, I believe it's getting on to eight years here now, Clay.
Number eleven here.
So I'd like to recess to welcome our CEO of Networks Sales and Partnership, Clay Walker. Glad to see you again.
Thank you. I'm actually, if you've heard, my eleventh year in Networks. Richard, Mayor? Hard to believe, isn't it?
It is.
Um, I apologize, I was also intended to be your last, uh, last month, but due to the death of the family, cannot make it. So I appreciate those of you who knew about that and reached out and always having support of so many friends here. Um, so the quarterly update is kind of a, kind of an old news sort of thing, but last quarter was a good one and some things are going over as, again, you know, all this news, but AY McDonald going into BTS Business Park, Bristol Business Park on my BTS. That was a great regional project that kept that company from relocating to Virginia, saving those two hundred and seventy-some jobs and looks to grow to about a hundred more jobs. It's gonna be a nice investment and, and a nice hit for that park. And of course, Falcon Thermal, Falcon Thermal announces a project for thirty jobs in Hawkins County and Fitzpatrick Industrial Park, which we work in. The BTS Park where AY McDonald ended up going was the part that received, I believe, a million dollars, I know at least a half million dollars from the state to develop that park. We received two million dollars now in our partnership part two in Bristol and we're certainly continuing to seek those grants. I, I think that our team in total, whether it be a city or, or a utility or Networks itself, uh, we, we collaborate on seeking these grants. And of the last three such grants that we got, two of those sites had an announcement before the work was even complete. And I think that just speaks to why we make the investments we make, because without them, we don't get these companies to come and with them, we have remarkable success. Uh, to that end, we're working with BTS on a two million dollar grant that our team, led by April Leeds in this case at BTS, uh, received from the state. Uh, we received a hundred thousand dollars due to diligence on a public property, uh, near that park. And we implemented a workforce development grant that we received from TBA to get virtual learning, uh, through headsets for virtual reality experience in manufacturing. And these should be real life manufacturing from southern county companies that high school kids can, can go see what it's like to work there. So those are the, the things we've been working on in addition to, uh, working on the final steps towards purchasing. Appreciate this board's support and the other three partners and networks, Plus City, Bristol and Kingsport, although we do randomly as well, uh, to get that phase one of the development on the Airport Parkway property, thirty-five plus or minus acres, uh, right next door to Leclerc as you go into the airport, uh, to get that underway and getting engineering done. That will enable us to seek grants and really have a marketable product with real dollars to the timelines as to what to take to get that site finished. We're also working on implementing a million dollar grant, the second one, in partnership part two. Uh, the city of Bristol is doing the match on that one. Uh, so, um, that's a good partnership with Networks and Bristol and, um, that's going to make another, uh, it's gonna actually develop two sites, a thirty-five acre site and a twelve acre site. So we're excited about the continued product development. Um, we're excited to have been working with Jones, Wayne and the South now. Somebody, Michael Parker and I met, David Lauter, their aerospace target market specialist, uh, about a year ago, and introduced him to Gene Cossey and, uh, and Mark Canty at the airport. And we entered a relationship of Networks and Tri-Season Airport to work with JLL to help us do some things that really be done in aerospace park, that park. Because you cannot purchase the land, uh, with the FAA money, it makes it very unique and we need to bring in somebody with a large network of national, international private developers, uh, who are used to doing those type of deals. Uh, because companies won't invest typically in buildings if they can't own the property they sit on, but developers will, they make the owners work. And so far, that partnership is going well. We have a couple of leads in working with him and the state. Again, busy times, we continue to work some projects, a, a large, large project in Fitzpatrick. Uh, we have a similar project that we had a Zoom call with just yesterday, looking at partnership part two. We are working with an existing company in Southern County, out in the county. Uh, I've talked to Commissioners Glover and Commissioners, Commissioner King about this project. Uh, and we, the county IDB just recently approved a payment with a tax agreement for them that I will be bringing to y'all. And again, Brian Herschel, the, the numbers that we've talked about no longer are not fully finalized, but I'll give those to you within the next week and we can work on a resolution, uh, toward that. It's very, it's a very competitive project, but it would be very, very big if we could get that here as opposed to their, one of their allocations. Um, the state has really stepped up on this, uh, project as well. You know, we have a lot of partnerships and collaborations. I, I want to call, as we get down to the very end, hopefully knock on wood, on some of these large projects that look very good for us right now, um, two partners in particular that we wouldn't be down the road with these projects if not for their, just their outstanding work and, and, uh, just being so good at what they do. And that is, uh, East Tennessee Research Center, led by David Golden, uh, as well as Northeast State. We had a Northeast State Foundation Board meeting today, the Dr. Report gave an update. Uh, but Northeast State with the R-CAM, uh, they have really been a difference maker with the companies we've been working with. They just continue to impress and make all the difference in the world, just being our tool, Brian. So, uh, again, I apologize for missing last month, but, uh, as always, we'll be happy to take any questions, uh, if any Commissioner might ask.
I have a question for you. Clay, thank you. Uh, just raise your hand since I'm down here.
I got it.
Um, how many acres or how many projects have you got going now that are ready to go, build ready, you know, the grading's done, ready to start building on? Have we got several acres or have we sold what we had ready or do we need to start looking at other places to get ready to, so when people come in to look at something that it's ready to build on?
Yeah, we, we are looking at other properties always. Um, and, um, we, we just have, if you take aerospace park, of course, that's, that's specialized sound equation. We, we have a couple of, uh, sites totaling about forty acres, did I say, or shovel ready in addition to, uh, the property, the Fitzpatrick, a hundred and forty acres that is currently under option with our big project there. So that will really leave Fitzpatrick with very little property left in that park if that, if those, it's actually two projects, if they come through. But we have, uh, BTS has received that two million dollar grant, developed about a thirty acre site, and we're developing those two sites that, uh, we're getting started on engineering work within a month, uh, in partnership part two and working on the thirty-five acre site in Kingsport. But yeah, as we've talked about in this room, uh, it costs us a lot of money, so I don't have to tell y'all to develop sites. Uh, and that, that's the way it is and thus, we are always going to be kind of chasing after sites a little bit further behind than we like to be, but with y'all's help, we, we've stepped up better than we haven't in a while, so I appreciate that. But yeah, we, we're not rich with sites, that is for sure.
But we have sold some land and we ought to have a little bit of money that we can go develop and, and maybe even purchase land that would be, you know, uh, we could get shovel ready.
Yeah, we do. And again, as we talked about and as we've approved these deals, uh, with our high cost of development, we don't make a lot of money and that's not the reason why public dollars are put in for the real spec deal. It's the other benefits of, of economic development. Um, so, um, we, we are developing, we are getting some money, but that's going towards paying the bottom debt off, off of that. So, um, again, you're always running behind it, this game is just the nature of it. But it does free us, but it gets, it does, Commissioner, to your point, get rid of that debt that frees you up to, to take on more obligations. And that's why we came to you with the Kingsport property on Airport Parkway and we're trying to identify others. I've talked to a developer who owns the property and is interested in a public-private partnership to do a spec building, uh, out in, in the county in Bonny Flats. We just talked this week, so it's very early, so if we can figure out the devils and the details on all that, um, figure that out and maybe be free with that project and the proposal.
Other questions, just push your, I'm sorry. Do I? Just, uh, don't forget to sign it, Tri-County Industrial Department.
That, that, I'm glad you brought it up, I should have reported that. The board has approved, I believe we, we need to vote, but the, the IDB, uh, Michael Parker in my office has taken bids and IDB redirected and backed it directly. Uh, I think, uh, Commissioner, we're within, we have a meeting coming up within the next four weeks. I think at that point, they would green light a contract and replace that sign.
Right. All right.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't do back with you on that.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you, Dwight. Any other questions, just push them up. Glad, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, the report and, uh, and that sign, do you replace?
Yes, I appreciate y'all very much, thank you.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Crossway and Commissioner Leonard to go in well with, uh, Mr. Doug Cross and any members of his congregation that you have with you. Have anybody with you, Doug?
Yeah, I've got several of our members.
If you all would like to go up here, I'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and face this direction. How are you?
Okay.
I'm well, thank you. This bigger turn, turn out my shirt. Well, as our commissioners know, and I hope our guests know, we, the commission takes time during each meeting to recognize outstanding achievement on part of these individual organizations in our community. And this is a unique celebration, quite honestly, we don't get to do that very often. And so with your permission, I will re-proclamation that the county commission would like to present tonight. Whereas Cross United Methodist Church was organized in eighteen twenty-four and therefore is celebrating a brick heritage and two-hundredth anniversary. And whereas the Cross Church had its first meeting in the Snobber School Building located on Snobber's Hill, northeast of the present church, at six eighty-nine Cross Community Road, Longville, Tennessee. And whereas in eighteen seventy-five, the Snobber School was destroyed by heavy snows, which caused the roof to fall in. From that time until eighteen ninety-one, the congregation met in various locations. Whereas when Cross School was built in eighteen ninety-one, the congregation began meeting in the schoolhouse and continued to do so until nineteen fourteen, when Mr. Thomas J. Cross gave land for a church to be built. Reverend J.E. Knapp led the congregation in construction of the church, which is named for Mr. Cross. And where had logs from that eighteen ninety-one church property from its members were used to build the new church and make furnishes. The logs were hauled to Wolf's Furnishery Company in Bonny Flats, Tennessee, where the pulpit, pews and the chancel, chancel rail were made. Those furnishings remain in the church today. Whereas the current church structure was dedicated in nineteen twenty under Reverend S.L. Browning, remains home today to an active congregation, as you can see. Whereas this congregation has contributed greatly to the community and the history of Selma County. And whereas, we acknowledge Matthew eight twenty, for where two or three are gathered together in my name, there am I in the midst of them. And whereas, this congregation has provided inspiration and preached the gospel for two centuries. I, Southern County Mayor Richard Benble, on behalf of Southern County Commission, hereby proclaim May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Cross United Methodist Church Day in Selma County, in celebration of the congregation's two-hundredth anniversary. Doug, um, you're representing your group, I'm happy to present this to you and give you an opportunity to respond.
We appreciate it and we just try to keep my own keeping on, that's all I've got to say.
Are you starting on your second two-hundredth year?
Mm, yeah. Probably won't be here for the end of it.
I'm planning on it. If not in body and spirit, I want to celebrate that.
I want to thank you very much. Thank you everybody.
Can you all come here in front of the seal to take a picture?
Take a picture? Come on up, Doug.
That's right, we'll take a picture.
Okay. Come on. Yes. Okay, one, two, three. You got it, you got it.
Mayor's responsibility is to appoint members of the building district in Southern County and, uh, I believe, there is an informer available, a reaffirmant available in the Plus City Utility District. And I, uh, at the request of the board, reaffirm Brian Flank, be appointed to serve on the Bristol Plus City Utility District Board and Commission, uh, stated term. Next up, great favor, as most of you know, Jason Vanoy retired, building inspector here in Southern County. After thirty-four years of service for Southern County, Jason served a distinction and goes into retirement with great satisfaction of a job well done and, and thanks for the county. Uh, because of that retirement, a vacancy has occurred and I have, uh, working with our Director of Planning and Designing, uh, identified person I would like to recommend to the commission, and this is a commission appointment, First Tennessee, uh, PCA Code thirteen dash seven dash one one oh. And so I recommend to you that, uh, you appoint Andrew Lovellow to the position of Southern County Building Commissioner and Building Official under the National Code Commission. Andrew's with, not Andrew, would you stand up? He's not, he's not hard to see. Uh, Andrew has worked, uh, for four years, uh, as a building inspector, uh, under Jason and others and Amber and crew, and I'm convinced of his, uh, his ability and his determination to do the job well over the half of Southern County. So do I have a motion, a motion by Gardner, second by the captain, to appoint, uh, Andrew Lovellow? I told him I would not butcher his last name the way mine is sometimes, and it's Lovellow. So when you all call him, uh, you'll know, know who to, who to ask for. Um, have motion, second, any, uh, any further, uh, discussion? Are there any further nominations on the question? Being none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, sitting five, sitting aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Having received the necessary vote, Andrew Lovellow is appointed to position of Southern County Building Commissioner. Congratulations, Andrew. Okay, that, uh, brings us to the approval of commission minutes from previous meetings. And now my last from the motion, the approval of commission minutes will be for both four, eighteen twenty-four commission meeting as well as five, nine twenty-four work session. The commissioner Jones, Commissioner Gardner, seconds of any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes. Sitting none, we can open the board, feel cast your vote, uh, on the motion to approve. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-two yes, two ayes.
Or seeing necessary majority of the minutes are approved as published. Uh, next up, uh, on our agenda is the consideration of appointments of no republics, or the clerk has spread a list of those on your desk, and at this time, I will ask, uh, our clerk to read the list about them.
Michael Shannon Adams, Angie W. Fowler, Karen R. Bellamy, Tina V. Beemitt, Ronnie Lee Biddinger, Candy Denise Blair, Angie Brooks Harris, Gwendolyn Lisa Buchanan, Todd Carrier, Jamie N. Colerchase, Brian Kenneth Conken, Tonya Elizabeth Crawford, Robert, Robin Crowe, D.M. Dallas, Tonya N. Davis, Preston E. Deal, Mark Kethren Draper, Emily Suzanne Vender, Vicki K. Fields, Becky Fleaner, Brandon R. Forn, Stephen Wayne Gooch, Melissa A. Greer, Jonathan Isaac Hammons, John A. James Jr., Don Robin Keen Jr., Dana L. Lane, Joshua Lloyd Light, Stephanie Linkus, Casey Marion, Brandon Mast, Gregory K. McDavid, Nancy Elita Mumhauer, Jessica Renee Newman, Julina Carrie Knuckles, Susan W. Owens, Dr. Sandra Ramsey, Alice C. Redline, Brian D. Reed, Alexandria Beth Rose, Dylan Joel Shockley, Tara N. Smith, Lacy Ferris Smith, Alexandra Blake Spivey, Jessica L. Tilly, Cody W. Williams, and Victor Williams.
You've heard the list, does anyone have any objection, anyone on the list on your desk or no, certainly? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the list. Mr. Gardner, second, Mr. Eric, in discussion. Seeing none, when board opens, cast your vote on the motion to adopt the list, agreed. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-two yes, two ayes.
The list as, uh, read into the record is adopted. Mr. Cross, do we have anybody signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes.
No one signed up? Okay, thank you. Um, I'll open the floor for, uh, for anyone in the audience, uh, and we'll recess for anyone in the audience who didn't have an opportunity to sign up or just missed it, to identify yourself now and come forward. Seeing none, public comment section is over. Mr. Eric, your right to go on personal privilege.
Thank you, Chairman, very much for that. Um, I just kinda wanna give a real quick overview of the budget and everything. Everyone on their desk should have, first of all, the presentation that the school board presented us yesterday. Uh, I thought with, uh, with their budget being what it is, everybody needed to see that and then also the actual budget, uh, from the general fund and everything. And so what the ask is, instead of everybody trying to ask questions, do things, um, I feel it's prudent if, um, if you would email myself or John Osborne any questions, uh, so we can go back to the, uh, chairman and the superintendent with those questions to, to ask and give them opportunity to answer those questions. I didn't feel like yesterday was a great opportunity when you're handed a ninety-six, ninety-seven million dollar budget to try to ask those questions yesterday without some thoughtfulness behind it and everything. And being that it is such a, an important part of the budget, I felt like the full commission needed to see it ahead of time and such, so. Timeline, I just, you know, if you think about it over the weekend or whatever, maybe Monday, Tuesday, try to email myself or John Osborne and then I'll work to, with the, uh, superintendent and the chairman and then, uh, hopefully kind of, we're not having a budget meeting next Wednesday, it's the following Wednesday after Memorial Day we need to start meeting again. And hopefully by then, we're, we'll have a framework, uh, the other part of the budget, our part of the budget that the admin, budget and executive have looked at, so we can kind of see where we stand on all, all those fronts. And so if anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to congratulate you on a very good meeting and had a good budget, tremendous meeting, and I appreciate the members who were able to attend with us. Next up is the consent agenda. Uh, we have items three, four and five, uh, as requested sponsor on consent agenda. Uh, if anyone has any objection to items three, four and five, let, let me know now.
Three, four and seven.
I'm, I'm three, four and seven. I, I got carried away on county showing I don't want to come there. Sorry, three, four and seven, thank you. Any, any objection? Seeing none, Mr. Gardner, a move to approve of, uh, consent agenda, have a second?
Second.
Seconds, uh, have, have two seconds, uh, in discussion. Seeing none and no, without objection, uh, when the board opens, vote, cast your vote on adopting consent agenda, ask your question. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-two yes, two ayes.
Never seen necessary majority, consent agenda is adopted. Next up is your resolution agenda. Uh, we have two, two items under old business, uh, that will help, uh, before we get to our, our new business for this one. First up is item number one, Commissioner, Commissioner Locke, you're recognized on item number one.
The chair will pull this resolution due to not having enough support for it and will come back and wait and debate maybe something else.
Without objection, Commissioner Locke requesting, uh, to pull the resolution from the commission, without objection, so. Uh, Commissioner Cross, you have a question?
I guess this is a question for Attorney Street. With that being pulled and no vote being taken on it, does that have to wait a full calendar year or can that come back next month if a vote happens or, how does that
The only, the only rule that comes to mind, I don't, I don't recall us having a rule that if a resolution fails, it has to wait a certain period of time. I know we have a rule that if you attempt to get a resolution passed on first reading and it doesn't get thirteen votes, then you have to wait a month, I think, to bring it back, but I can't remember a, a rule about, well, of course, this resolution's not being voted on, but I think that's your question, he's withdrawn. If it was voted on and it failed, I, I still don't recall a rule that says there's a time limit on when he can bring it back.
Thank you very much. Those are local rules and, uh, law enforcement. Those are our local rules and not proper shit. Without objection, item number one, to withdraw from the commission. Next up, item number two. Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two is a resolution to approve vacating a quick planing a right-of-way to Ernest Williams for an unopened right-of-way planted at Hicks Avenue located at the intersection of forty-two, forty-four Blumbell Road. Under the advice of County Attorney Street, Mr. Williams needs to acquire some more signatures from neighboring landowners in order to get the quick plane. He's asked for more time to do that, so in light of that, I'd like to roll this to next month.
Commissioner Vanover requests to roll item number two to the first item on the agenda for scheduled meeting in Southern County Commission. Without objection, roll to the next meeting, first item. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, sir.
Under new business, items three and four, but not five, are up. Commissioner Cross watch. Now, I have Cross watch and Iverson, and Iverson is requesting on this.
I need to make a motion to reconsider. We've already voted it last month. I got reconsider.
Okay. Oh, okay, this is one that's been asked before. I'm sorry. Commissioner Iverson is recognized.
Yes, sir. I just need to make the motion to reconsider, and if I get a second, then I'll tell everybody what it is.
A second, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Cross watch.
So, last month, in the attempt to clarify, I made it very muddy. So, I'd like to go back and take away all of the comments that we made or that I made as far as adding language to this, and go back to the original document as it's in your packet, and vote on that as is, without anything else being said into it.
Okay, I'm going to make the original number. We have second, proper motion, and I'm going to make statements in the, can't turn it very correctly, but we have motion, lift the table, motion to reconsider, item number five, and proper second. All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion number five is back on the floor as originally presented. Now, Commissioner Iverson, you, Commissioner Cross watch, you need to be recognized, or Commissioner Iverson, you move for adoption?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Iverson moves for adoption, second by Commissioner Cross watch. Now we're discussing. Any discussion or questions for a sponsor? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on item number five. The board opens, please cast your vote on item number five. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Matt Thorpe takes the vote.
Twenty-two yes, two ayes.
Ever seeing a necessary majority, item number five, it is adopted. Next up, Commissioner King, item number six. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to amend the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year general fine appropriations for county buildings to cover the cost of re-riffing or replacing the roof on the Blumbell Library at a cost of up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Most of y'all know that the roof on the library has got dormers. The dormers were not placed on the roof the way they should have been. We've got leaks, or one major leak, and then some other smaller leaks, but anyway, it's causing damage, and we need to go ahead and get this replaced as quick as we can, and I'd like to put this on waiver rules and go ahead and get it passed so we can start partying, so.
Commissioner King moves to suspend the rule, or to waive the rule, with immediate introduction and adoption, item number six, second by Commissioner Piers. Any discussion? Two. Commissioner Ross?
I'd ask to be added as co-sponsor if that's okay during work session.
No objection, Commissioner Cross, to be added as co-sponsor. Commissioner Jones?
I would ask Commissioner King if he would, if he were willing to vote some affirmative, be added as a co-sponsor.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Commissioner King acquiesce, so although voting in affirmative, will be listed as co-sponsors. Any, Commissioner Rick, would you recognize?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner King, the last week you mentioned about the printed last, that Commissioner Harvey is hoping to save. If it's not to be able to save, can you put a little plaque up there in honor of Sheriff Harvey?
We could. We could. Might be have a little.
As much as I'd like to support that, it's out of order. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Anybody else want to audition for the tonight show? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on it. Board opens, please cast your vote on item number six. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Matt Thorpe takes the vote.
Twenty-two yes, two ayes.
Ever seeing a necessary majority, item six is adopted. Next up, item seven. Commissioner Jones, you're recognized on item seven.
This is a resolution, no additional money from the county for the summer learning camps. No, eight, what, I thought it was, but it wasn't.
I'm sorry, it's item number eight. I misphoned.
So it was on consent.
Yes, no per se.
No, this is eight.
We're on eight.
I voted on item seven.
Yeah, we're on item eight. I thought I'd ask for consent, but ask for waiver rule.
I'm sorry, I misphoned myself on item seven.
Sam, you're recognized.
These are, the summer learning camps they do every year, these are the grant funds and the amounts. We're asking for waiver rules so they can go ahead and get these camps scheduled through the summer.
Waiver rule?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones moves to waive the rule for immediate introduction and adoption, item number eight, second by Commissioner Calton. Any discussion? First sixteen votes, passing. Seeing none, on the board, the board opens, please cast your vote on item number eight. Everyone voted? Anyone wish, anyone wish to change? Matt Thorpe takes the vote.
Twenty-two yes, two ayes.
Ever seeing a necessary majority, item number eight is adopted. That completes our resolution agenda for this evening. Appreciate the efforts on moving along. And at this time, I usually ask for any, and if I don't ask, I really mean to, if the commissioner wants to be recognized on the point of personal privilege, I will do so at this time. And like I said, in future meetings, you as commissioner, you as commissioner can address this commission at your request. All you have to, ask to be recognized on the point of personal privilege, and you can address this commission as long as you want to, on any subject you want to, and my personal rule is without personal attacks. So, I want you to know that. So, this is a good time. Obviously, you're welcome to do a public comment. You can do that. This is the time where you have a more, maybe have a more relaxed audience to hear what you have to say. So, we have a couple of people here. That defines everybody, but you watch, King. Commissioner Rick.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few things. I know tonight, East House having their graduations, congratulations all to them, and tomorrow is Tennessee House. Congratulations to all them and me, and get my second one out of the house and everything. And then Saturday night is West Bridges' graduation, and I'm sure someone in Kingsport probably knows what Donald Spence' graduation is. But I know all three of those are going to be televised on BTS Channel Seven, so it's an exciting time for all the young students around here and everything. Couple other things, we've probably got a lot of emails. We've got a caucus on June sixth, and the Republican Party does, at night, so the emails have been going out the last couple days and everything. And then on Monday, at the Bristol Tennessee Republican Meeting, our own Sam Jones will be doing a presentation in honor of the week before Memorial Day and everything, so if anybody ever want to come out and everything. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Jones, you're recognized.
I sit in the seat currently that Baxter Hood had, and Baxter was very involved in this program. He turned eighty last week. He's down in, with his, close to his children, but the Liberty Celebration, that's done every ten years in Kingsport, it's a huge, hundred-plus body of singers, it's a very patriotic celebration. That's June twenty-eighth at seven PM, that's Friday, and June twenty-ninth at two PM on Saturday. I do have tickets, if anybody would be interested in going to it, they're five dollars each. Just wanted to announce that, and they will be, the choir, about fifty will be part of our veterans ceremony on Memorial Day at Kingsport, as we celebrate and recognize those veterans that gave it all, so, thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Ray, your card, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Lock for taking the initiative to, you know, bring forth a resolution to cut the number of commissioners. I think that takes a lot of guts, but I also think that we need to go about doing it the right way, and it's, it's a big deal, and you have to put a lot of time and care into it. I think the way that the current redistricting was done, I mean, if you look at what Doris sent out to us, there would be two more city commissioners, counties, there would be two more county commissioners in the city than there are in the county with this redistricting. There would be, there would be.
We're not going to argue about this.
No, that's what I'm talking about. If you add both of the city commissioners.
Let's don't invite this, let's, let's, Commissioner make his statement.
If you add both of the total from the city of Kingsport and the city of Bristol, they combined would have two more commissioners than the total number of commissioners in the county, I think that's a little bit unfair. I think county government should have more commissioners in the county than in the city. I'm completely in favor of cutting it down, I just think it needs to be the right way. It needs to be done in a way that doesn't disenfranchise rural voters, and I also think that we should probably target, you know, sixteen to eighteen. I think if we cut ten, that's maybe moving a little bit too fast, but I just think we need to do a proper redistricting process, think about it fully, and make sure that we're making the right decision on it. But again, I thank you for bringing it up, and I think it took a lot of guts.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody that this is National Police Week, the Sheriff's Department will be having a program at Blumbell Christian Church, just across from the middle school, at six o'clock tomorrow. We'd like to invite everybody out. There'll be a lot of families following Southern County officers there, so I think they're a time of sheriff's support for our local law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gardner, you're recognized.
Mayor, I want to, I want to end the meeting with a little bit of levity, I was just going to let everybody know that this coming Saturday is a milestone birthday for myself, so I'll be accepting lunch and dinner invitations for the rest of the month, and with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Without objection, we're adjourned.